So I'm gonna ask Pat to take the roll call, please.
Okay, we have, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Um, Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Present. Jeff is absent. Shawna is absent. Billy Malone? Is present. Yeah, he's on mute. I can't, I see his little bald head, though.
Uh oh.
Dorothy Wong?
Here.
Is here. Uh, Aaron Cumming, I guess. Chris O'Malley, I saw Chris.
Yep, here.
Present. Gloria Sanyika is present. Veronica Jones is present. Antonio Becerra?
Present.
Present. Nick Santangelo is present, I think.
Yep, here.
Yeah, yeah.
Here.
I am here. Doug Cauliflor is here. Dan Harlow, yep, he's here. Diane Marcusson and Sylvia Vega.
Here.
Yes. Okay, we have, we have a quorum.
Great, and thank you, all of you, for coming. Many of you who we are not going to see on land use again after tonight, and I just wanted to thank everybody. Um, I want to approve the agenda first, but I just wanted to, my heart was full there for a moment. Okay, um, so, uh, the agenda was sent out. Does anybody have any amendments to the agenda that was sent out a couple days ago? Can I get a motion to approve it as distributed?
Make a motion.
I second.
Second.
Victoria, second.
Okay, Victoria, second. All those, Billy, yes, what?
I'm in favor. Sorry, I was, I was just, yeah.
You're just running ahead of me.
Anticipated, yeah.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as distributed, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so we can move forward with that agenda. Um, we have two months' worth of minutes to approve. Um, Nick, do you wanna? Did you get any changes, or are you all, you're on mute?
Have you managed to get through, uh, the day we got turned?
Hang on.
I did not receive any, as far as I know, I checked a little while ago, I received no revisions or corrections, so as far as I know, um, it's all good.
I enjoyed it. I was just like, how? I wasn't out. I, I feel like I was okay.
Okay, Amy Lyford, Amy Lyford, please mute, thank you. Okay.
Aaron, Aaron's trying to get into the waiting room.
He's in.
There he is.
I'm in, thank you.
Yay. Okay, um, okay, so Nick, do you wanna go through your, your minutes? Do you wanna ask, oh gosh, I clicked something else now, hang on. Ah, I keep making it small. Okay. Nick, do you wanna go ahead and do each month's worth of minutes, do a motion?
Um, I moved that they be approved. I have not, I haven't gotten any revisions or updates or edits. So as far as I can tell, they're, they're good to go.
Okay.
So I approved that they be approved.
But let's just do them one at a time, real quickly.
Okay, I don't, um, my iPad's a little, I don't know how to get my, work my way around here, so let me see if I can get over there real quick.
Well, you can just, yeah, so, or if somebody could just make a motion that we accept the, um, August, the July.
I'll make a motion to accept the July 7th, 2020 minutes as presented.
I second.
I second.
All those, all those in favor of accepting the July, um, 2020 minutes as distributed, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Was anybody missing from that meeting that needs to abstain?
Aaron. Aaron abstaining.
Who?
Aaron Cheeto.
Okay. Alright, so can we do the same thing for August, please?
Can I, I make a motion to, uh, accept the August 4th, uh, 2020 minutes as presented.
I second.
Second.
Okay, Victoria, second. Um, all those in favor of accepting the August minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained?
Aaron.
Okay.
And Victoria.
Oh, and Victor.
Really? I don't think you were here for the, um, August meeting. You were here for July, but not August.
Okay, abstain.
I know, it's hard when, when we haven't been together for so long. Okay, um, okay, so I'm gonna not pick up a whole lot of time with a, a chairman's report. Um, we have had a really terrific year with all of you. We've gone through some, um, complicated projects and some months without projects. Uh, I'm expecting that we'll have, um, for the next couple of months, it looks like we'll have some projects coming up that, um, some will be more complicated than others, and I just really, really appreciate all of you having gone through all of this time with your due diligence, your hard work, your, um, even-handedness with looking at all these projects and really trying to look at it from a, um, from your community perspective, as well as, uh, your own perspectives. So, um, it's, land use is a lot. Land use is, is the biggest thing that town council does, um, really, um, is, we were sort of, that was part of what we were formed to do, um, and some of the projects, even the small ones, get quite, or can get quite contentious, um, and it's just, uh, everybody just has to keep their heads about them and listen and, and be thoughtful about how we're looking at these. So I just really, really appreciate it. I appreciate all of you that are not going to be, um, on, I will, starting next month, I guess, and I really will miss some of you terribly. So, um, I am going to try to have a meeting with the new folks, um, uh, offline, sort of an offline meeting, just to sort of talk about what land use is and what we do with land use and how we approach it and all of that. Um, but I, I just really wanted to take this time to say, this is a really, really good group of people. I've been doing this for a long time, and this was a terrific group of people that were willing to act together and, and discuss things even-handedly and, and really make some progress in Alstina. So thank you, thank you, thank you to all of you. Um, the, I don't really have anything else, except I did mention that I'm gonna try to have that meeting, um, get the new folks together to talk about and break them in to land use. As you all know, it's not easy. Um, okay, we have no.
Diane?
Yeah.
Diane, I wondered, did, do you wanna say anything about, um, Puff Puff in this meeting? I know that you've sent out information.
If you want me, I can, if you want.
The reason, the reason that I mentioned it is that I, I saw before, just before I logged on, we just got another complaint that was sent to all of us about the, the situation, so.
Right.
For the record, it might be helpful.
Okay, so we have a new marijuana dispensary that has just opened, um, on the southeast corner of Woodbury and Lake, um, which although some of you may think that that's a little too far south, that is in, in Sylvia and my, um, census tract. And so, we've been, I've been working on it, um, and taking comments about it. So where we are, it's called Puff Puff Pasadena. Now, they may think they're really in Pasadena. I don't know the answer to that, because they have a Pasadena address, um, but they are located in unincorporated LA County. The rule in unincorporated LA County is that you're not allowed to have dispensaries, um, and so, and the rule in the state, I guess, is that you have to get licenses from, um, I think the state and the county or the city, um, and our county is not allowing those. So what happens is that the, um, the places open up and people in the area, this is an especially sensitive area. We, in land use, talk about churches, schools, um, those kinds of, uh, locations as sensitive locations. When we're doing any kind of an alcohol CDP, we're especially sensitive to all those. That's got like a whole ton, it's got a school and two churches and a whole bunch of stuff right around there. So it's not a really good area for them to begin with. Okay, so the only thing that, um, can be done when one of these opens up is there's a, um, regional planning code enforcement has opened up a case. That case has been referred to the county council and to the sheriff's station, and they will work the project together. So county council will work on the legality of getting the people evicted, um, and the sheriffs will, you know, watch and make sure there's not people hanging around and doing whatever else. They also go down there and, and walk in, I guess, occasionally. Um, having said all of that, these, um, locations, these businesses know how to play the game with both the county and the sheriff's station. I was told the other day that one of them, they finally got the, um, landlord to cut off the electricity and they went and got a, um, generator. So, um, there, you know, it's, and I will tell you that there are a lot of people in Altadena that like having those around, right? So we have to make sure that we're all, I'm looking at it from a, what the rules are, right? What the law says. And the rules are, in LA County, you can't have one of those open. So, um, whether, you know, whether I wanna go Puff Puff Pasadena or not, right? The, the rule is that they're not allowed to be there. So that's kind of where we are with it. It's being worked. Any complaints or comments or whatever that you see, you can tell them that it's being, that there's a case open with regional planning code enforcement, um, that it's been referred to county council and that, um, Captain Jacobs is well aware, um, of the situation and has her folks working on it. I think the, um, the detective department is working on it. So, uh, that's pretty much all we can do right now, and it, it takes sometimes a very long time to get them gone. So, anybody have any questions on that?
No, I just have a comment. There's one on Fair Oaks that's been there and that there's a case open on also, uh, right next to the L House there. There's one there, and they're working on that one also, which is right across the street from Metropolitan Baptist Church.
Yeah, it's, uh.
No, I, I will.
Yeah, it's annoying that they, that, you know, they don't follow the rules, but I guess that's a lot of play, you know. They, these guys don't ever follow the rules, it seems like. Okay.
What, can I mention something on that? Were you were saying, on a comment on that?
I don't know. Are you in your apothecary room?
Yes, I am. My background. Um, yes. No, it, when it, when it comes to the, the actual light, you, you need a license to open up one of those, and in the cities that do allow it, it's only by area, and there's only, and it's limited, and even then, I believe in some of the local cities around us, the application fee, just to file for the application is two hundred, around $200,000.
Wow.
So if, if these are opening up and they haven't paid those licensing fee, which you know they haven't, then, um, it, you know it's not actually a certified or regulated or a licensed one. Um, so, a- any, you know, they're having a really hard time, even in the cities that ha- allow the dispensaries, to, to stop the unlicensed, unregulated things from opening.
Yeah.
And if they haven't applied, then this would be most likely the case, I can't say for sure.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, so, well, but if they, they can't, in the county, you can't apply, right? Because the county won't let you come in, right? So they may think they're in Pasadena, and I think Pasadena does allow a couple of them or something.
But even with that, Pasadena, there's only, it's not even just the, the, the amount of licenses that they let out, which is only a handful.
Yeah.
They also only designate inserting buildings within the town. So you.
Oh, I see, okay.
Only about five or six buildings that they will actually allow them to be in.
Right, which is not across from churches and schools, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So anyway, okay, so Veronica, you and I can, and Sylvia, we can, you know, we can keep up with them together, but it's, we, we really, um, I don't wanna take a lot more time, but we've really done what we could. We, you know, we've handed over it to, over to the people who have done this over and over and over again and kind of know what they need to do to try to handle it. So, okay. Um, at that, right now, then, what I'm gonna do is hand it over to Veronica. Um, we're gonna go ahead with the presentation. I'm sorry?
No, Antonio is going to start.
Oh, okay, never mind, sorry. Okay, Antonio.
Okay, we're gonna pitch hit this together.
You're gonna, I, okay, you're gonna tag team it. Okay, no worries. Um, go, thanks, Antonio, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll take it from here, thank you. Uh, so today we're gonna be reviewing project number PRJ 2020-002284-5, CUP number RPPL 2020007102, which is a requested change for the McDonald's at 2157 Lincoln Avenue, which is in our census tract 4610. Uh, this change is to add an additional drive-through window to the existing two windows that exist there today. Uh, today's just an informational session to get acquainted with the project, and project files were sent ahead of time to committee members today. Um, as an FYI, the project team will be returning to the land use committee, uh, with updates in the near future. That is just the first meeting to get this going. Uh, so with that, Veronica's gonna be introducing the project team members.
Okay, the team for this project consists of the owner, Paul Paneki, Carlos Madrid, Madrigal. How do I say his last name?
Madrigal.
Madrigal. He's the construction manager for McDonald's, and Kristi Gia, project manager for Core Estates Group. The regional planner is Steve Marr for the County of Los Angeles Department of Regional Planning. Kristi Gia of Core Estates Group will be presenting the information on the project. So Kristi, you can get started.
Now you can share your screen. Hopefully you'll be able to do that. I don't think, do I have to give her permission or anything? Oh, it's not my meeting, anyway.
Let me try first.
It's a royal channel, I mean, past your media.
Okay, I'm sharing right now, let me know if you can see it or not.
Yes.
Okay. So this is basically the proposed elevation that, um, I have sent to Veronica late, uh, previously. I'm not sure if, uh, everybody have got this already or not, but basically what is, um, highlighted right here, that's the third window that we're adding, and these two right now are the existing one. One, right now there's one pickup and one, uh, sorry, one, one order and one pickup, so we're adding a second pickup window. Um, so the total addition is about 191 square feet. As you can see, it's, um, within the existing property line, and we're just basically replacing the existing building sidewalk, and, um, there's gonna be new canopy adding, a new metal fascia and wall scones, basically matching existing, so the design is staying consistent. Um, that's basically the main scope, that's it, just this, um, little.
Right.
Piece of the back, back of the house.
Right, so, so are, so the, the, um, elevation on top, does that, is that what's existing or new?
Uh, that's also new, that's the front side.
Okay, okay, so, um, and this is just me, this probably doesn't have anything to do with anything, but how do you know which window to go pick your food up at? Will, will, when you order, will the person say, go to the second window or go to the first window?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was gonna go. So what the process is here for the third window, what it does, it's an operational window. So what we do is we have the first, as Kristi mentioned, is the cashier, it's where you pay.
Right.
Then you come to your second, which is the pickup. The third window, what we're doing is, this is for, so when you have a, a large order or special order, or we, we have a lot of, uh, customers in the, in the drive-through, what we do is, we use the third window for, uh, to alleviate a lot of the, uh, the, uh, you know, stacking of the cars in there, so that's what that, that's for. Inside, we're also doing interior remodel in the dining room, and then, uh, a few kit, uh, equipment that changes the kitchen, which will help also expedite a lot of the, the, uh, timing in the drive-through. So that's what the third window's for, and you're, you're absolutely correct. It, it will be, at some point, the, uh, crew will let you know, uh, move to the next window, which would be the new additional one. So that's what that's for. So it's really to speed up the drive-through and speed up accuracy.
Right, okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Aaron.
Okay, Aaron, go ahead.
So, um, I'm semi-familiar with this location. Um, I, I don't go there, so I may be off a little bit, so that's why I would like to ask some questions. So what my thought is, is that when customers enter into the property, are they coming in from the northwest location, and then it comes in, it heads south, and then wraps around and then heads north to these windows? Is that how that works?
Um, that's right, the Woodbury Road, that's actually on the north of the property.
Okay.
And, um, let me know, are you able to see my screen? I changed it to.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good view, thank you.
Yeah, so basically they're gonna come in here and then line up over here, and then turn around, like you said. Yeah, so.
But I do have to, but they do enter from Lincoln as well, just FYI, they'll, they'll enter from Lincoln and go all the way around the building.
Oh. Yeah.
So if you're on Lincoln, yes, and you come in either way, yeah, you can come in and you go through the front of the building and wrap around to the drive-through and then go ahead.
Right.
You can also come in at Woodbury, and then obviously Woodbury is the straight shot to the drive-through.
Right.
Okay. So, so this concept is designed to alleviate any kind of residual traffic that may accumulate upon Woodbury, is that correct?
Exactly, yeah. It will allow you to utilize this space. Right now it's basically wasted. You can stack more cars here, so the main parking lot, all the part, all the traffic stacking here is gonna get relieved.
So you're not actually adding to the structure itself, you're just redesigning the inside to then accommodate this third window?
Well, it does have the addition, that's the 100 square foot plus or minus square foot addition to the front. So you have a jog, currently we have a jog there now, wait, so we're, what we're doing is we're infilling that portion, which is sidewalk. Right there, correct.
Oh, okay, right there.
Sorry, this is the, this is the old, there you go. This is what it looks like right now. Basically, this portion that's set back right now is gonna pull up and align with this drive-through window, so.
Okay, okay.
The corner right here.
That's perfect, that's exactly what I was curious about, thank you.
And so what happens too, like you said, uh, and Kristi was saying, is when that car, for example, this view is good, because if you kind of, uh, vision, envision the two cars, one paying, one picking up, and then the third car, once we're, maybe where the person's standing, more or less, that would be the third car, let's say, waiting for this food. The car that's in the middle can actually just leave, and so that, now the next car behind that paid can move up to the second window to pick up the order. So if that's a large order, uh, they're kind of out of the way. So the cars are continuing to move in, and our drive-through lane just continues to circulate.
Okay, so really, you're not really expanding or extending the building, you're just pushing it out a little bit to accommodate that third window, and it's not really making any kind of an impact on the property itself, right?
That's correct.
Exactly.
Right.
We are doing a, the in, interior TI, like I say, we're doing, redoing the dining room, uh, the restrooms to make them ADA compliant, and then we're doing, uh, like I said, a little bit of kitchen work to, because of that third window that we're adding, you know, uh, it's in the, within the, will be kitchen, so we're gonna kind of add a little bit of equipment, but that's the scope of work interior-wise.
Okay.
As well.
And we're not for the interior at all, they said we're not involved in that at all.
Right.
No, thank you very much, that completely answers my questions, thank you.
Okay, Victoria?
I just had a question regarding the flow of traffic. Um, unlike Aaron, I'm very familiar with this location, because I go here a lot. Um, I have young kids, and, um, I will say that you guys do a much better job at this location than the other location that we had to go to three times over the weekend to get our order right. But my concern is that, and this has just been a concern generally. We've talked about how you can enter the parking lot from Lincoln, and what you should do if you do that is you should make a right if you're gonna go through the drive-through and then go all the way around the building to where you would meet up with the drive-through on the other side. But what happens, and this is my concern about the new configuration that will handle possibly more, uh, traffic at one time, is that people will make the, they will enter the parking lot, they will go, um, straight instead of making a right, and then they go around the building to the right and make a U-turn to join the line. And so I'm just wondering if, and I don't know if this is, it may not be required, but if the, I can see arrows, like where the flag is, that point that way, I'm just not sure if there's arrows along where the pickup windows are that indicate you should really be going north.
Yeah, can you, can you go back to the overview, um, of the lot versus?
There aren't any arrows, but I'll tell you one thing.
There are, actually, you can see.
You can see one.
Okay.
So it doesn't restrict them.
It gets very narrow there, there's, it's really, would be really hard to go around that curve.
Oh, no, they do it. I see it all the time, yeah. They come in through Lincoln, and then they make a U-turn, like where that red car is that's in the drive-through to join the line there, instead of going all the way around the building. So I can see that there are arrows there, you can see the white arrows, and you can see yellow arrows, um, but it's not the reality.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, to, you know, I've seen other locations that have a similar setup, and they actually put like some orange, um, uh, not the cones, but the glued-down ones around the curve.
Delineators.
Lineage, yeah, the delineators with some.
Yeah.
I, I would highly suggest that for this location, so.
We call it, we call it, it's what we call branding, and so that's what the yellow arrows are, they direct you to the drive-through. And I know it's difficult, but one of the things we can do is add some directional signs. Uh, we probably, in this location, probably, I don't know yet, but we can, is, uh, we either replace or reinstall what we call directional signs that show you drive-through and then give you the arrows to make you show, so that they understand if you do come in off of Lincoln, it's kind of a one, well, it is a one-way, that it's a one-way, you come in, continue the, the circulation, go around the front of the building and come in, and, and by doing some directionals, uh, that accomplishes the task, and also the branding. We put more branding in here. This one tells you drive-through, you know, we, we stripe it, we, we put the arrows and we put the, the wording "drive-through" so that people follow it as they're going, and they see the direction and circulation of that. So we can definitely do that.
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely consider that for this project, why I've, I've been to this location a few times, and I've noticed the same things, like.
Yeah.
The Coria House.
I'm just, I'm curious, like you were saying, that, uh, someone comes in off of Lincoln and makes a U-turn on the, where the red car is, more or less. I'm not sure how they can get into the drive-through, because our order point is where that yellow box is. So you see your menu board is where the white car is, and the order point is where the yellow box is. You order there, and then you kind of come around, so. Someone make.
You'd be surprised.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It's not as busy.
Yeah, when it's not busy, they probably do that.
It looks like they could even pull into a parking place, do like a K-turn.
Three-point.
Yeah, yeah, they do a three-point.
Yeah, I think what happens.
Very, very tight. It's very tight.
I, let me just say, I've done it, and I'm not proud of it, but I've done it. And then the reason I've done it is because there are often times, and this is something that you should know, that on the side of the building, and this is when school is in session, which it's not right now, but it may be back in January, February, on the side of the building where the drive-through is, that is where the kids congregate. Someone may have a car, they may double park, they may T-park behind another car. So if I come in at Lincoln and I see all of that commotion there, where I know I have to go around, and I see there's nobody in line at the drive-through, it's tight, but you can do it. So I just think, I think you're on the right track with some kind of lines of demarcation that just let people know this is the way to go, and don't go this other way.
Okay.
Um, yeah, Victoria, any other questions, or I have a few, if no one else does.
Go ahead, Daniel, go ahead.
So, um, since this location was originally put in, you know, we have changed the Altadena CSD, and we do have new rules around, uh, drive-throughs in general, thus why you're here, uh, tonight, um, because we do require CUP now. Now, a couple of those rules are, um, you know, a certain distance. Now, a couple of those rules are, um, you know, a certain distance from residential property. I've looked at this. There's obviously no residential property within that, that zone. But one of them has to do with hours of operation. Do you know what the hours of operation of this McDonald's location is? And is there any plans on that change?
The current, the current uh hours of operation is the drive-through is twenty-four hours. And then the lobby, and it's a perfect scenario, you know, uh, pre-COVID. The hours of operation for the lobby were five AM to midnight, and that's seven days a week. Those will probably, those will most likely remain. Uh, lobbies are closed currently until further notice, but the drive-through will still remain as a twenty-four hour drive-through, seven days.
Okay. So in the, so really, not only are you asking, uh, do you have a CUP for the original twenty-four hour drive-through?
When we did this restaurant, we were by right. Uh, we did a, but it was, it did go through planning. It went through a uh, back then, a planning, plot plan review, which was uh administrative, but it, you know, it got approved with uh some conditions. But it was just, uh, that was the only entitlement needed at the time.
Jack in a box is the same, uh, down the way from there. The jack in a box is the same.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but part of the CSD rules based on feedback from the community was that drive-throughs, unless they had a CUP that allowed them twenty-four hour operation, that, that uh, it would be restricted to six AM to midnight um, by default. And so really, they're asking, and that was based directly on community feedback because of issues with other drive-through locations that are near residential that were problematic because they're running twenty-four hours with loudspeakers and other issues at night. And so, um, you know, I, I want the committee to be aware that, you know, this, this is not, you know, technically, this drive-through is not in compliance with the new rules, uh, because they didn't get a CUP for twenty-four hour operation in the past. And so the question that I have are, are they considered grandfathered in for twenty-four hours? Or does this CUP that they're asking for need to allow them to continue to operate under a twenty-four hour uh schedule? The main reason that was put in was for drive-throughs near residential. This is not near residential, so obviously there should be no issue.
Yeah, Daniel, good point. We'll ask. So Veronica, we'll talk to Stephen and, and Antonio. We'll talk to Stephen Marr about that. Cause I don't, I don't think we know the answer to it, and I think it's better for us just to.
Because there's no problem with this location twenty-four hours, but we should, we should include that in the CUP.
So our request, our request would be is honestly to allow the drive-through to continue with the non, non-conforming rights per your new ordinance. And then also we'd ask, we're asking for the continuation of the non-conforming hours which are existing. You know, and again, twenty-four hours for the drive-through and then the five AM to the midnight, seven days. So it's open seven days a week. So that would be, our request is to continue our non-conforming rights per your ordinance of today.
Yeah, I, I, and Daniel, I, unless there was something that came out that I missed, I have not seen the CUP application, which. Yeah, which may have more information. I couldn't find anything online, even though we had the number. I, they've changed their, I don't know if you've had, if you can help me, but I can't, I can't. I can't get anything to come up. I'm gonna have to talk to um, somebody at regional planning to try to understand what they changed. But in any case, um, that's uh, that's a good point. So we'll, we'll go see if it's included. Like I said, I think we need the CUP application and, and I haven't had a chance to, or, and, and I don't think Antonio and Veronica, I don't think you were able to get that yet either, right? This, the actual CUP application?
He, he didn't send me, um, the, he did send me the application. Yes, he did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's, he sent it late this afternoon, yes.
Oh, okay. So send it over and we'll check it out.
And basically, he said the same thing that basically we're here to talk about the third window.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, uh, but if they, if we need to, we should loop in the twenty-four hour operation. I, like I said, there's no objection that I have to it. I just, I wanna make sure we have all our eyes dotted, t's crossed.
I agree. I'm, I will, I agree. And the reason for is for future, if this ever comes up with any issues, you know, then it's, it's, uh, and like you said, if you guys go back and to look at the records of the file, it'll clearly stayed in there. Uh, you know, what we had for as far as entitlement. And again, like you said, we're not near residential, which is a, which is a big plus. Uh, so that helps. But again, uh, using also kind of the case of non-conforming rights that we've been here since, you know, uh, almost, almost twenty-five years ago.
I remember when it was built, so, yeah. I think almost all, we all do.
The other thing, the other thing that that um allows us to do, and, and to Daniel's point, is that you know, what we, what the town, what the land use committee does and subsequently the town council does, town council puts together a letter that goes down to regional planning that goes to be part of the file that says we recommend um approval or denial. And if we say we recommend approval, I'm making all this up, you guys, this is all hypothetical. But we would be able to say, because this location is not located near a residential area, we recommend that they continue to be able to open hours that are not non-conforming at the moment. So and what that allows us to do then is when another um drive-through goes through that is near a residential area, we can say, well, yeah, we did allow this site to do that, but it's because, and see, here's the record that says, it's because it wasn't gonna be disruptive to the community. And we need to be able to have those things to, to fall back on when we have other, other uh requests. So is there, does anybody have any, any other questions? I can't see everybody, cause everybody's on.
I had two things.
Yeah, go ahead, Antonio.
Um, one of them, I, I agree with the uh, the, the comment about the directionality of, you know, the arrows and everything in the uh McDonald's, just because, you know, based on a lot of the traffic accidents and pedestrian accidents that we hear from fire department and some of the reports you receive, Lincoln and Woodbury is a pretty, you know, high volume area for that kind of thing. So having the, you know, those kind of slow signs or some sort of directionality can hopefully maybe mitigate those kind of things. Um, and the second thing, I just wanted to ask if the addition of the third window here the front, uh, if it displaces any entry points, fire exits, or if it removes any type of ADA compliance?
Um, so, as you can see, there is one exit right now, right here. Um, we are actually relocating that one to the front elevation, which is like right here, which we think that actually is gonna promote like a safer and better pedestrian circulation, because right now, the existing entrance is actually at a dead corner and it has like, the blocks are visual from the, from the traffic that's coming. And this way, this sideways, this sidewalk right here is actually the existing ADA pass. So it's actually gonna shorten the distance of existing passive travel. And so it's still, still meets the minimum fire requirements, like the distance, and also the minimum access required by building code, and also assumes the ADA compliance.
Got it. Thank you.
And there is also just on, on the Woodbury side, there's a ADA path of travel from that, from the public right, yeah, right there, from the public right way to the side door, which is on the non-drive-through side.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions from anybody? Speak up.
I have one question here.
Go, go ahead, Coria.
Yeah, when um, when you have people coming out of that front door, I mean, even now, uh, there's parking on, on, you don't see the parking lot on there, but there's a parking lot. It just seems like there should be maybe something like a crosswalk or something that keeps the traffic, because you have people who are coming across the street and then you have cars that are moving. I mean, what is, what's gonna be there that safeguards people going back, back and forth from their cars?
Yes, crosswalk. A railing in the front, the kind of, kinda, what we have currently now existing, they'll be rated in the front too, that, that mitigates someone just kind of shooting across it. It's a barrier and then we'll have an opening with the crosswalk to get back to their cars. On this side of the parking lot, yes.
Yeah, I think also the striping was added a little too. So I think that view previously was uh, this was just done by Google previously before that was painted, so.
But I guess the striping is going sort of at a, a diagonal. And when people come out of that door, because this stuff there too. And when I came out that side door, I just kind of went across to the parking and not at an angle. Even though there was like, uh, you know, you have the crosswalk there. I don't think people are just gonna go, they're just, they're gonna walk across to their parking, to their cars.
Right. But remember, this store is gonna be gone now and it's gonna be moved over to where the front elevation is. So it's right there now. And that's actually the shortcut that's, there's a little pathway going through the landscaping to the.
To the corner, right.
The corner of this tree.
So the striping, the crosswalk is actually gonna make more sense now to actually have it because the door will be in the front. So as you come out the door, it'll make more sense that you're crossing. So either, if you're walking, you kind of cross, cut across that landscape area or cut across and then just come to your car, which is now safer. Cause yeah, I can see where the previous door was. It's kind of back. No one goes there to crosswalk. They'll just walk right across the.
Right.
Even though we have railings there, they'll still just kind of shoot across the drive-through lane.
Does that answer?
Yeah, that pretty much answers it.
Is anybody else, anybody else have any questions?
I do. This is Dorothy.
Go ahead.
Hi, yes. Um, so my question is, um, with adding the window as it relates to um, volume of cars going through the drive-through, uh, do you see an increase, um, like a percentage increase of efficiency? So do you, cause often, I, I also sadly or happily have used.
Shamed. Nobody should be shamed that they're shocked that they're eating at McDonald's. We love McDonald's.
So, yes, so at the end of the day, I, I have uh definitely uh driven through, uh, coming home from work, um, especially going up on Lincoln as one, uh, probably arguably one of our most busy, busiest, um, uh, freeway off-ramps leading in and out of Altadena is Lincoln. And uh, so I'm just curious to see if there's a volume uh increase, because I guess what I was backing up to saying was, when I saw the long line around there, I would always go, well, not this week. I'm gonna go home. So will this improve your efficiency? Um, do you see like an increase in, in getting cars through? And if so.
That's the purpose for the uh, yes, that's the whole concept of the third window, what we call, uh, pull, we call it a pull forward.
Yeah.
So that's the whole concept. It's actually to improve, because again, if you, with the two windows, the car that's picking up the order, if they had a large order, they were ba- basically holding up the other cars. And then we also have what we called, where we would have the cars kind of pull and go into a parking stall, say, well, you know, park there while we get to help. So this concept is a lot better. We've, we've, we're doing this uh continuously on a lot of our existing buildings and our new. So that will help the consistency, the percentage. Now, again, drive-through percentage is up a little bit because of, it's the only thing that's open. The dining rooms aren't open, so we have seen an increase in drive-through percentage. But I think when things come back to normal, to normal, post, hopefully COVID, uh, it will come back. This, this has about a seventy percent drive-through, which is pretty good. Uh, it's not great. It's pretty good, seventy percent. But the dining room again had, was uh at full capacity, was good. So with that third window, down to the question, just, it does improve and it will improve it. Um, because of that, again, the third, the second car in the middle with that third lane can leave and then the cars just continue to, to move. Even if that car is holding, uh, still waiting for their food, uh, two, three cars, sometimes even four can get in and out of there before that one gets their food. And, and usually typically, it's for large orders or special orders. You know, they'll, they'll order now and, and we have that, not our kitchen equipment changes. They'll order uh almost specialty uh food items, you know, so when there, we have the capacity now to do that, so.
Do you see an increase like ten percent?
But that will, and the efficiency is going to be better.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Do you see an increase, like a percentage? Are you predicting an increase?
Not, not because of the window, no.
Okay. And then, uh, so back to the traffic safety questions that many people have asked here.
Because of the window, no. It, 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 what, what?
Hello?
Wait, I think we lost.
I hear you.
We hear you. We do hear him.
We can still hear you.
Everyone should mute. Everyone should mute to help.
I'm here. I didn't hear the question from Dorothy, actually.
Oh, I think you, you answered it. You don't really see an increase in uh traffic, I mean, in efficiency percentage-wise, right? Like, would you be getting twenty percent more customers through your windows by adding this, do you think?
Drive-through manage? No, that's correct.
Okay, and then I was just gonna segue quickly just to a couple. Uh, go ahead.
I'll say, yeah, uh, as far as efficiency, yes. The increase of efficiency will be better, but not an increase of. Just because of the drive-through.
Okay, thank you.
So, so Dorothy, you won't see that big long line and have to turn away.
Yeah, I have the app, by the way. And I look for my deals when they pop up on my screen. Uh, but, so back to quickly, just uh traffic safety. So again, Lincoln and Woodbury um have the highest, um, and I have seen over these years an increase in businesses that, um, you know, are kind of uh, operating along Woodbury. And so there is a lot of pedestrian traffic. So I would definitely ditto whatever we can do to um protect, you know, be mindful of pedestrian movement. Uh, there are businesses on the west side of Woodbury, west of the McDonald's, and I see people walking there. And um, as drive-through grows, um, there is a potential, as I understand it, for a project across the street where gyms will go away and there will be another drive-through potentially. Um, so I guess it'll be a cumulative drive-through effect here. Um, so it'll be just something to really think about. Uh, and the transit stop is right there, um, at the corner of the McDonald's. So we get a lot of traffic flow, kind of pedestrian flow of people walking from work to McDonald's, crossing the street to get whatever they're gonna do on the other side of the street and kind of come back. And so, you know, for me, I definitely look at this area. There is one where the green strip is on the uh, on the west side of McDonald's. There's the green strip and the building next door. That's actually crazily enough a parking space. And so hopefully, uh, we can kind of red curb uh that, because this is also a high uh injury collision corridor for bicyclists, because the bike lane goes away uh, as you approach McDonald's. Um, and so there have been um, definitely some uh collisions with the traffic along there. And so, you know, thinking how the cars exit onto Woodbury, like when I go through McDonald's, I go to my drive-through and I come out and I, I, I re-enter the street at Woodbury. So, um, it definitely just kind of put that in the record, just making it clear.
You mean on the, the public right away, the street, curb on the street?
Yeah, the green, there's actually a parking spot. It's legal to park right on the street, right at the green strip between McDonald's. And so literally, you can't see um anybody coming. And so, and the bike lane goes away. And so I have actually documented um, some traffic collisions there for bicyclists, uh, as well, the other intersection where. Yeah, the bike lane goes away. And also, this is actually a pedestrian um area. So hopefully, with all of these improvements, we can all look at how to make this intersection safer, because it does have, um, you know, I used to say it was Fair Oaks and Woodbury, but it's actually Lincoln and Woodbury that have the most um collisions as it relates to vulnerable road users, which are pedestrians. And, you know, the transit stops are. as it relates to vulnerable road users, which are pedestrians. And you know, the transit stops are there. People are going to the stores and loving the businesses.
Okay, great. Yeah, and, and you know, Dorothy, if you need to get something painted individually, go to road maintenance, talk to them, you know, we can get stuff done with the, we don't have to wait for any big project. You can, you know, you can get that taken care of if, if the businesses there agreed with. Um, okay, is there anybody else that had any questions?
I, I, I just want to make one quick comment, um, because the, the gentleman Carlos touched on it. Is that there, there, there is a safety factor in here uh, that comes into play that makes it a lot safer. Currently, when, when you have the line in traffic for the uh, uh, drive-through, you know, when you have those big orders that happens in any driveway, they always say, pull ahead, pull, pull to the side, please wait. And then you have um, employees coming in and out of that side door, crossing the traffic, crossing the drive-through, you, that will be eliminated. So I'm just saying, there's a safety factor in play here that um, actually gets a limit, the worst-case scenario gets eliminated and it looks like a better-case scenario is im- implanted by doing this.
Yep, absolutely right. And that's with the twenty-four hour drive-through, then crew member never has to go outside. That's one of the, that was again, that's one of the uh, pluses of doing uh, this type of uh, scenario as well.
Right. Okay, so I think that's all of the discussion. Pat, um, Sutherland, did you have any public comment for this project that you received?
None for the project and none for general public comment either.
Okay, so um, folks from McDonald's, thanks so very much and.
And I'd just like to say something real quick. I know that just from experience, using that third window, it's, it's going to be a whole lot better, cause I use the one in Hawthorne on Wednesday mornings. It's a whole lot better.
We're learning so much about people's McDonald's uh, pattern.
But it's way, it, it, this is such an improvement.
Okay, great. Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, we will most likely have you back in January and have this be in, as an action item in January. We're gonna get the question answered with uh, with uh, Stephen Marr about the, the hours. Veronica, you're gonna send me the um, the application. I'll look at it and we'll get it out to everybody. If, you know, I'll look at it and see if we need to talk to Stephen Marr about it or anything, and then we'll get it out to everybody. Um, and if nobody else has anything else, then thanks very much to the McDonald's folks and please stop. Yeah, thank you, okay. And the next item on the agenda was gonna be general public comment, but we apparently don't have any. Um, and so, uh, and we didn't have any census tract reports for this particular meeting. So if I could get a motion, unless somebody has something else, unless, if I can get a motion to adjourn, that'd be great.
I, I just wanna make one statement at the beginning.
Okay, I was actually, I'm still on, I was just gonna say thank you guys and uh, hope to hear from soon. And again, thank you very much for the feedback. Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks so very much, Carlos.
Thanks, Carlos.
Thank you, everybody. I'm gonna.
Thank you.
Our next meeting.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
And Gloria, see, we didn't even need to lose you. Yay.
I know. That's why I hung in. I said, well, looks like we're gonna.
Right. Okay, Billy, go ahead.
No, I, I was just gonna say thank you to everybody, but that was all, it's already done. Um, I, what, at the, at the beginning of the meeta, meeting, by the way, Pat called me bald. I just wanna clarify, the correct terminology is person without hair. Okay, critically correct, it's person without hair.
Just cause I love you, Billy.
And, and, and again, I'm gonna miss all of you who are no longer gonna be on the committee with us. It's been a really good group and I, you know, I, I'm gonna miss all of you. So um, thanks very much. Have a great Christmas and ho- and holiday season, New Year's, whatever. Please stay home, wear a mask, don't go anywhere. If you go anywhere, assume you've been exposed and isolate and all of that good stuff. Okay, I have a family who's not doing so well with all that, so I am sort of the COVID police for my family. So, okay. Um, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it. Take care, have a good rest of your evening.
Did we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, oh, okay, never mind. Who can motion to adjourn? Sylvia, second.
Second from Veronica.
Second from Veronica. All those in favor?
What happened to Doug? Did Doug sneak out the meeting?
Oh, yeah, I guess. I'll, I'll see a lot of you, I will see at the town council meeting in two weeks, so take care.